You ready? We will call the, um, meeting of the April fifteenth, meeting of the Village Council, Elmont Village Council to order. Please rise for the pleasure, the regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where it stands, one nation under God, and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call.
President Dyke.
Present.
President Protem Steffler.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Present.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
We have additions or additions to tonight's agenda as presented. Being done, um, I had no communications. Moving on to the consent agenda, our regular meeting minutes from the April first council meeting. General Fund. Major Street Fund. Local Street Fund. Park and Recreation Fund. Stimulus Grant Fund. Capital Project Fund. Sewer Fund. Water Fund. Equipment Fund. Bureau Register Report. Water Report. The DPW Activity Report. Water Usage Report. OEO Report. Oh, that's, no, I'm sorry, that's part of the DPW reports. Waste Water Treatment Plant Report. Police Clemms Report. OEO Activity Report. Construction Code Authority Report. Financial Position Report and Fund Position Reports. Court Treasurer Monthly Update Report. Being no comments, questions, or discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by President Protem Steffler, seconded by Councilmember Feldman to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, tonight, now we are time for public comment for anything on the agenda items. There's nobody here, so moving on to the regular agenda, ZBA member alternate resignations and appointments.
Yes, there's been several, a lot of movement at the ZBA for not having that many meetings. Because Councilmember Miller is now on council, he resigned as a ZBA alternate, so I'm requesting that you accept his resignation. Also, Steve Schneider is also currently a ZBA alternate. However, he was originally appointed as a council rep. Now, we need to switch him to the Planning Commission Rep. And Terry unfortunately turned in his resignation last week due to personal issues, so we need to accept his resignation as ZBA member and vice chair.
We're looking at this for three separate motions, correct?
Correct.
Any questions regarding the resignations and movement or reappointments of the ZBA?
Also known as the equivalent musical chairs with Planning Commission.
I just had one question that says included in your packet is Terry Roach's resignation. Maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see it.
I apologize.
Yeah.
It's not, yes.
I said something earlier, I just noticed it.
No, that's okay. Should've noticed that too.
So I'm not sure. Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Miller's resignation as a ZBA alternate?
I'll make the motion that we accept the resignation of Mr. Miller as a ZBA alternate.
Support.
Motion by President Protem Steffler, supported by Councilmember Schneider to accept Mr. Miller's resignation, Mr. Bob Miller's resignation from the ZBA as an alternate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Schneider as the ZBA alternate? Did you say this is from the Planning Commission, or?
So he could only be there if Mr. Tedeschi could.
Oh, gotcha. So, um, the appointment of Steve Schneider as a ZBA alternate for the Planning Commission representative for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, 2028.
Real quickly, A, I want clarification. Steven R. Schneider, it's my dad, not me, and since I made that clarification, also, before anybody makes a motion, I abstain. Obviously, it's a conflict of interest, I won't participate or vote.
Good clip.
Good clarification. I'll restate the motion, the appointment of Steven R. Schneider as the ZBA alternate for the Planning Commission representative to the ZBA for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Feldman, supported by Councilmember Miller, to accept the appointment of Steve Schneider as the ZBA.
No, it was not.
Oh, okay.
Planning Commission alternate for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, 2028. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, the acceptance of Mr. Roach's resignation as a ZBA member and vice chair.
I will make the motion that we accept Mr. Roach's resignation as the ZBA member and as the secretary. The vice chair. It is supposed to be vice chair, not secretary?
Vice chair.
Apologies. And as vice chair.
Motion by Councilmember Schneider, supported by President Protem Steffler, to accept Mr. Roach's resignation as the ZBA member and vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two on tonight's agenda is the HydroCorp Cross Connection Renewal.
I just have one question.
Okay.
Do we now need a new member for the board?
So, as I understand it, we'll have to meet as a ZBA to take nominations for a third person on the ZBA board, which then will come to us.
Correct. So I'll put it on Facebook, put it on our website.
Regular notification. Thank you.
Anybody else on item number one before moving to item number two?
And make sure. A motion to post that, like, similarly, like, okay.
We had to authorize DDA to do it. We don't authorize the village to do it for the ZBA. We haven't previously.
Administration has the, has the authority to post on Facebook site. But, good question. HydroCorp Cross Connection Contract Renewal. Ms. Kiesler?
Yes, included in your packet is the proposed contract from HydroCorp. They have a longstanding reputation with us. They've done it for many years now. And I was actually surprised, the proposal is actually less than the current contract, so a win-win.
Is everybody on council familiar with what this is about?
Oh.
Could you give a little bit of an overview?
I can try. So, the Cross Connection Program is for our commercial properties. There is a piece of equipment, I guess, that's installed near the water meter. It prevents backflow to go back into our system. And the Cross Connection Program, I think it's every three years, they have to recertify it, they have to get a certified plumber that is certified in backflow to pass the device, and HydroCorp does all of the paperwork for that.
Contracted with them for years and have had really good service with them.
Also, they do all the inspections of the commercial businesses. They actually send someone to each individual commercial business and do full inspections of every single water device, and they're gonna inspect every toilet, every sink, every, everything. And if there's anything wrong, they, they order you to fix it and immediately repair it.
So this is something that the village pays for rather than the individual commercial properties?
Correct.
And it's to protect our water supply, so that.
I understand the whole process, I just, I've never, never been around where the village or the municipality paid for this, opposed to the commercial properties paying for it.
I would assume they have to pay for the certified plumber to come out, but they don't pay for the actual inspection of it by HydroCorp.
Thank you.
Why is the cost less? Are we getting less service, or what's the difference between the current contract?
I asked DPW Superintendent Treat about that, and I don't think he got an answer. I didn't get an answer back, so.
I wanna make sure we're getting the same or greater service than.
Right, right. There was no differences in the existing contract and this contract when I compared the two, so.
Did the same thing, I cross-referenced it with our last one, and contractually, they made no difference. So either way, either they found a way to cut costs, or they're realizing that they need to be more competitive or they're afraid to lose the service. It's best guess, but it's a guess.
So just for clarification, is it two years or three years?
It's a two-year contract.
Top it says three year, and then down here it's two year.
Well, that's the current, or, yeah, it's two year. I'm just.
Well, I was gonna say, 'cause if it was originally three years and now we're going to two years, that's why it's cheaper, because we're getting one less year for just a little less than the three-year one, but that's not the case.
No, the last contract, they went from a three-year to a two-year.
Okay.
Didn't have any corrections to the minutes, but the rest of the packet, we'll just leave that the way it is.
I apologize.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract with HydroCorp for the Cross Connection Backflow Prevention Program, the amount of nine thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Support.
Motion by President Protem Steffler, supported by Councilmember Miller, as stated on the record.
It was me.
Oh, it was you? My apologies. We sound like each other. I'll restate that. Motion made by President Protem Steffler, seconded by Councilmember Feldman to approve the contract with HydroCorp as stated on the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That concludes tonight's regular agenda items. Now it's time for public comment for any non-agenda items. The public is lacking tonight, so there is no comment. Open discussion, the social media policy. So, um, over the last two months, the, well, historically, with some of the events that happened earlier in this year, it became quite apparent that the current social media policy that is part of our employee handbook is lack, was lacking in several areas of protection, including not, including only village employees, not also appointed officials and other things. So, that was handed to the DDA slash Village Subcommittee, who, over the last two months, has taken the time to rewrite, rewrite it first, send it to Legal, Legal sent it back to us with changes. We had a conference call with Legal, myself, Mr. Schneider, who was the main, the main author of the amendments, and Mr. Kerbison, our manager, to clarify some of the legalities. And before you is the updated social media policy for open discussion, so we can move forward. We can move forward with getting it implemented into the, into the employee handbook, the updated version. Along with that is a training deck that will be handed out as part of a training program that any village, any new village employee and any new appointed official or elected official will need to be given, they will need to read it and acknowledge that they received and read it and understand it going forward, and that's also included in the packet. Mr. Schneider, since you also had involvement in it, did you have any additional commentary on it?
Yeah, a few, a few big picture details, so everybody could be on the same page. One, this isn't, this, this, this shouldn't and isn't gonna be considered necessarily an amendment. You should really just consider our existing social media policy. We're revoking it completely, we're completely replacing with a whole new policy. Another big picture change to it is, previously, the policy was only specifically designed to address social media, and it didn't, specific social media platforms, it didn't necessarily address individual websites. Now it applies to all. Also, previously, our social media policy was only applicable to village employees, so it was not applicable to board members, appointed officials, things of that nature. You had to be an employee. It now applies everything under the village umbrella. If you are connected to the village, it applies to you, so it doesn't matter if you're appointed, if you are elected, if you're an employee, if you're a department head, doesn't matter, this is applicable. Again, yes, the training deck was instrumental in this, because we've expanded this policy so much, we went through multiple revisions of it, it is obviously much longer, much more comprehensive. The social media training deck is designed for being able, we don't expect that people are gonna be able to read every word of it and immediately understand the practical application of it, so the training deck is to be able to give them some sort of training, because we have to have a point person who is supposed to not only implement this, but oversight and enforcement and would provide training, and that's supposed to be the village manager. And our village manager is self-admitted not capable of doing that, being able to explain social media and its inner workings, 'cause he doesn't use it himself. So the training deck is there as our, as our tool for that. The only other thing I'd like to mention, and this was, that we don't have yet in our possession, but I fully expect we're gonna have by the next time this becomes a regular agenda item, we discussed during that call with myself, President Dyke, manager Kerbison, and then two Bodman attorneys, the need for, and it's the only thing I noticed that they didn't provide, I just realized this, or we've gotten it advanced, but there were, one of the key structures here is, is that when it comes to this policy, every single person, whoever makes any posts related to any village issue, whether it is on a village platform, on a village social media website, which we really can't do on our website anyways, or any social media platform like Facebook or Instagram or otherwise, you will either have been granted proper authority by the board or the department that you're serving under, or alternatively, you will post a disclaimer that you are, you are doing this on your own individual capacity and not in your capacity as a, whatever you are, board member, employee, whatever it is. So, absent granted authority or a disclaimer, everyone will be in violation of this policy. There's going to be no exceptions. And we thought that it was unfair, or probably unwise, for each individual to have to decide what the appropriate language of a disclaimer would be, and so the Bodman firm was supposed to write us five sample disclaimers that were going to be inserted into the training deck, and that's, that's the only thing that didn't happen. The training deck did come out a little bit later. It's one of the reasons the commentary is hard to read on it. But, that's the only part that's missing, and I just wanted to have that taken into context, is that we will have five model disclaimers that we provide to everyone that they can use, so that they wouldn't be in violation of the policy. But the policy is going to apply to literally everyone. And just in connection to our next agenda item, obviously, this is why we delayed the handbook, is because the social media policy in its current form, not this one, in its current form is in that handbook, if this council approves of this draft, it would go into the employee handbook and replace the previous social media policy. So just clarification on that. So that's why it's important that we address this before the employee handbook. Beyond that, the, the reason you have a red line version is because, I believe we were on our third or fourth draft at our Subcommittee, we finalized, we sent it to the Bodman firm, the red lines that you see are the Bodman red lines to our draft. I just wanna clarify, it's not red lines to what our existing draft is, 'cause our existing draft woefully inadequate, this thing is much, much more comprehensive, so the red lines are just literally the attorney's red lines to everything our Subcommittee drafted. So, I think that probably catches everybody up, just on the general basics and the ideas of the operation of it. Obviously, there's a lot of language and a lot of inner workings, so, any questions?
So we have official attorney direction that we can compel speech of personal nature by making employees, elected officials, have a disclaimer on their personal social media accounts?
Exactly, because we are not compelling speech, we're asking for a disclaimer and a clarification. They are allowed to say what they want?
No, no. When you tell them they have to add something to their comments, that's compelling speech. That is in a violation of the First Amendment.
Not according to them. Our attorneys.
Well, I'll tell you what, you're gonna end up all the way in the state Supreme Court if you're not careful.
I highly disagree. They went over this in very thorough detail.
I would like our attorneys to give us legal precedent and case law that says that we are not going to violate First Amendment.
Okay.
We need that in our pocket.
That was their, that was their key concern?
Because their opinion as attorneys means nothing to me. If there is no case law in the state that says this is what it is, then it's gonna end up creating case law. And I don't want us to end up creating case law in the state of Michigan. So, we just need that from our attorneys before we compel people to say they have to disclaim on their personal social media accounts. Completely, one hundred percent agree, if it's on a village website, or a village board, or a village anything, we, I have to stay within the bounds of what the policy is. But as soon as you say, once you leave that space into the personal world, I think we're treading awful heavy on some pretty sensitive stuff. That's just my opinion. That's why I want an attorney's opinion with cited case law. Because I think we're just gonna, we're just asking for a lawsuit. One that we definitely don't wanna, even to prove ourselves right, is gonna cost us money.
I, I don't disagree, I did feel, reading through, that that would, could be a sticking point on people's personal pages, wherever they may interact with social media. Where you're interacting in the public sphere, agreed, but on your personal platform, it is, it does get a little close to the line for me as well.
And I don't disagree that if you go onto your personal social media and say, as a village council board member, or village council member, DPW employee, whatever, then yeah, you're making a claim that the village is behind you. That, I agree, is not correct, but to be able to just say, I don't agree with whatever's going on in the village on your personal, and not make that statement, I think, to say, well, if you say that, you have to add additional language to your comment, you're compelling speech at that point.
Anybody have any other insights into the proposal?
I have a point of clarification. I assume that this applies to park board, though they weren't explicitly called out in this policy.
Correct.
In this red line for the acknowledgement form, they, so that's, the attorney's firm added this?
Yep. All red lines are theirs, they wrote it. They want an acknowledgement, everyone must sign, including all village council members, 'cause they're technically employees.
But, you're, again, I would agree, I don't necessarily agree with that, you're splitting hairs. You're an elected official.
Doesn't matter, you're W-2 employee, we went over this at length with them, you're a W-2 employee, that means absolutely.
So then if I say, don't pay me anything, then I'm, I'm elected here by the constituents of the village.
And part of that charter, which you're elected under, requires you to be paid as a W-2 employee.
Okay, but not by choice.
Well, you, you're aware that that's what the position, chose to run, yeah. You chose to run for it under the charter that says you will, so it is by choice.
Okay, so, but what if the folks that are electing you want you to take a certain stand on something? Now you're saying you can't take that stand because you're gonna sign this policy, saying that you can't make.
You can take a stand, nobody says you can't take a stand. There's a difference between you taking a stand and you signing an acknowledgement of the existence of the policy. It's, it's not saying that you can't take a stand, it's saying that you can't go represent the village on social media platforms without doing it as a disclaimer, right? So, and again, your representative taking a stand, wouldn't that be here in these meetings? Or are you talking about being able to take a stand on social media? 'Cause there's a difference, there's a distinction, right?
Yep.
So, if there's a distinction in that, I think that that's what's relevant here, is that no one person goes out and speaks for any department, any board, unless authorized to do so, and each board and each entity, each department, has a right to authorize certain individuals and an alternate who can speak on behalf of it, but the very idea of what was representative of the council, of any board, of any department, is supposed to be succinct to its official functions. Our official functions do not take place on social media. That's the very concept and the nature of it. And when you take a stand as an elected official, you do so here, in the, in the public discourse in these public meetings, which are recorded, which are equivalent, and it's, and it's discourse on it. You can take a stand on an issue, but social media isn't the place where you're elected to represent them on social media, it's here, these meetings.
Seen social media lately?
Try not to. Try not to.
I mean, you could name two dozen senators and the president himself, and every state elected official in almost every state that takes a stand on social media about certain things.
Is that going well? I don't think so. So, I mean, in my opinion, I think that what we're trying to do is narrow the gap, to tailor it, so we don't have inappropriate representations that are not supposed to be there in that way. And if you want to take a, a, a personal opinion in a public forum, you can. We just need to make sure that they understand that that's not representative of the village as a whole, of this board as a whole, that it's your personal opinion, which you're welcome to do. Just to make sure that we're clear, though, that when I go on Facebook and I say this is my position on any topic, I'm not saying this is the position of the village council on this topic, I need to disclaim that, I need to make sure that that's clear, that I'm not. That's exactly what the whole disclaimer is about, that's why our attorneys were clarifying on that, it's because their very concern with our first draft was freedom of speech, and we cannot, we cannot infringe on that right, and they were very careful on that topic, that was their whole concern, and they were saying, this is the way that you implement that policy without doing so, is.
They struck, they struck a bunch of stuff we had in there because they thought we were impinging.
And they said, there is an appropriate way to do this, because this is not the first time that they've addressed this issue. They were the ones that instructed us in the first place to redo our social media policy. And when we did, and in our first draft, they, and they, their feedback. And when we did, and in our first draft, they, they, and they, when their, their feedback of, but that's a freedom of speech. And we went, wait a minute, you told us this is how we do this without infringing on free speech? Now we've done it and you're saying that it is infringing, and they're saying, what, no, you need to tweak, you need modifications. There's ways to do this where it's absolutely legal and you're not infringing on free speech. And it, and it is a design policy, because we can't control what people say. Uh, they are gonna be allowed to say anything that they want to say. The only thing that we can do is say either we can control where you say it, like not on village property platforms, right? Because you weren't authorized to post there. Um, and if it's going to be, uh, in your own personal capacity, it just needs to be clarified that it's in your own personal capacity. That's, that's their position on that. So I, I, I understand the concern, but I, I.
Yeah, because I mean, if you go back to 1792, what, what, what is, what is the equivalent of social media? Was the town square? And somebody literally got on their soapbox, they didn't make a disclaimer that it was their personal opinion and not the representation of any other government entity, they just said what they thought was going on. And that's the analogous. Social media is the new town square. So that's why I still think we have a concern when we compel somebody to say, you have to make a disclaimer.
We, we can get that for you. I'm telling you right now, I can jump in Westlaw and I'll get to three or four cases immediately that are gonna disagree. You don't want to hear it from me, you want to hear it from them.
I just want it in documented so that way later down the road when we get sued.
Right, well, there's the case of, is it legally allowable? And is, there's a decision to be made of whether we want to impose that on our employees, board members and ourselves dictating what they can and can't say on your personal social media platform. I have a hard time with that.
Again, it's not to say that you can't say it, it's to disclaim that you, who you say it on behalf of. It's a clarification. You can say anything you want, as long as you clarify if you're commenting on a village issue, that you not representing the village when you do it. And this is a fundamental distinction between the two, to clarify that I don't represent the village when I say this, this is my personal opinion. It is not controlling your speech, it's clarifying your speeches, who you represent when you do so. I mean, that, that is federal case law on this issue, when people, when people.
I'm not arguing case law. I'm arguing is that what we want to make people sign? And I feel pretty, I feel uncomfortable with telling people how they have to portray their own personal opinions on their own personal platforms. I, it's a little close to the line for me. So, yeah, not gonna, I don't want to argue law or I, I want to argue or not even argue, just want to present the case.
Discuss, discuss.
Is that what we want to do? I think it's something to think about. And I mean, we all get to vote and we'll all make our, our rational reasoned decision, I'm sure. But yeah, I, you want to look at case law and, and I make sure that it's constitutional, I think that's a good idea. Um, I would also just have people think about whether or not that's the business that we want to get into, dictating what you do on your personal time. 100% agree if you're commenting on public platforms, if you're commenting on things out in the general sphere, but if you want to say something on your own page that you control who has access to. It's a little different for me. I think you could recommend people do it, but I don't know requiring and then you get in people, employees turning each other in. I don't know, I don't really like that part of it either.
If, um, we don't have the disclaimer on it and an employee posts something that's controversial, isn't there a risk of that being evidence for any kind of like lawsuit? Like, like, let's say there's, um, something where a lawyer might interpret that as an official village position if they find a public post from an employee. Um, and it might look like they're representing the village or one of the departments. Isn't there a risk of being sued from, from the other side, I guess, like?
Yeah, I guess I don't fully grasp the, the hypothetical. You're, if we, was it, did it start with if we don't have disclaimers?
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't have disclaimers and then you're, you're, you're taking the, the, the other side of the coin of that argument, right? If we didn't have disclaimers, they make a post and then is it possible it can be interpreted that that was representative of? It, that's, that's part of what's in mind, that, that the Bodman firm was considering, right? That's part of exactly what it is, because we've already been through some issues in the last few months that put us in exactly that position and that's exactly what this policy is designed to fill those holes. We were told that our policies and protections were wholly inadequate. This is what was necessary to fix them. And they left the initial drafting to us, uh, at the subcommittee and then they refined it. So, I mean, and this was what they were saying is what we should be doing to adequately protect ourselves on both sides from any, any questions of retaliation for free speech, of infringing on free speech, from, um, adequately protecting the village in its interests and our liabilities, from people, um, who might want to misbehave or be bad actors. But I mean, there's admittedly, even in our concerns, there's, there's, there's still inherent flaws even in this setup, because you can give, it, it requires us to give authorization on behalf of each board or department for an individual to be able to post. And so the very question even, even our president asks is, so what if we give that authorization? Because we trust that person, everything's going fine, and then suddenly it's not, and they start posting inappropriate content. They will not be in violation of this policy. I mean, i- unless it, there's, there are some even limitations to free speech, you know, assault or threatening behavior, things of certain nature, which you cannot use as qualified protected first amendment free speech. Um, and if it's not one of those, that it would not necessarily be in violation of the policy. And the instruction was, it's at that point that they've done it and they're not in violation of the policy, but you immediately revoke their authorization uh, to be able to post and so.
And you, and you can pull the post down.
Right, and you can pull the post down if, if, if I, if it violates some of those very, very high criteria. If it doesn't, you can't pull it down.
Cause it's.
It becomes, because then it would be infringing on their free speech. So it's, there's, there's no perfect solution. This is as broad and protective as they can offer.
And the part that we're talking about was suggested by the Bodman firm as an extra protection. Bob Wayne, you have anything to chime?
Well, I, I've signed, I, I actually am one, in one right now, actually. You guys know who I technically work for, so I'm used to this. I mean, we can't even have a brand on a social media post. I mean, they, so I'm used to this. So I mean, to me, it's kind of a, you either sign it or don't work here.
Government jobs that do this, yes.
So for me, I get.
Mm-hmm.
I actually like this policy. You know, I, I, pretty much the way that it's written, um, you know, being part of the committee and being, you know, going through a lot of the process with the committee. Um, you know, I, I think part of it also could be that an employee or whomever with the village is aware of this may not test it, because it's almost like, you know, you, you better not, either or. Um, and they're not gonna test it, you know? There may be, there, there may be somebody that said, hey, wait a minute, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna challenge this. But, um, I think for the most part, it's pretty well written.
So we, we will take back to legal, the, both the case law concern and the free speech concern and see, see what their response is to see if it can be altered or adapted in any other way and then well, then.
Well, I don't know that we're asking for alteration. We're asking for legal authority that, and, and, and precedent that, that this is, this is a legal approach. Does that be a fair way, right? We're not asking them to modify it, because first of all, there's no agreement to modify it. We're asking for legal authority to back their position on these red line changes. Is that accurate? Okay. That, well, my only thing is, they're a very expensive firm. I'm not saying I want to pay them to start redlining it when we haven't agreed to redline it or make more modifications. I don't even know that we're in agreement on what those would be. We're asking for legal clarification of its current existing draft. And if that didn't work, we maybe have to go back to the drawing board, right? So.
Anybody else on the social media policy? This was one of the first completions of the work of the subcommittee, um, working together to come up with a project, so. There's enough why. Um, the second open discussion item is the employee handbook. This was an agenda item last time, but we did have two, um, council members that weren't here. We tabled it because we didn't want to approve the social media policy when we were going to amend the social media um, policy anyways, which is within it. We wanted to put it on open discussion so it could become an agenda item again at, at the future meeting, when, at the next meeting with the social media policy. But, um, Pete and Mindy did not hear what the changes and why the changes were being made to the employee handbook. So Kim, could you give like a two minute summary of, of that?
Yes, the, the majority of the changes is to comply with the ERMS sick time act that went into effect in February. Um, while we were changing it though, I did, um, do some minor modifications in radical errors. Um, and, uh, under travel expenses. Um, we are using the village's address as the starting address for mileage reimbursement. Um, meal reimbursement will be based on the US General Services Administration rates. Um, because ours is woefully under, um, what it is now. So if we base it on that rates, it's always in compliance, no matter what, it, it adjusts, so. Um, an event itinerary is required as reimbursement is not given if meals are provided at the event. Um, breakfast per diem is not given if the hotel provides an adequate continental breakfast. Um, and, um, though most conferences, events have a discounted hotel room rate, we will compare it to the GSA rates to, and it'll be the lesser of the two. The only question I had was on the social media policy. Since there's an acknowledgement form for that policy, do we want to either do just a quick social media, see social media policy as a separate document, so they acknowledge that separately? Or how did you want to incorporate that?
My understanding of the difference between the two, because I mean, there's, there's the employee handbook. So the employee handbook doesn't need that specific acknowledgement, because you're gonna, you have a separate acknowledgement for the entire employee handbook.
Right, right.
So for the employee handbook version, it doesn't need that. But for everyone else who does not.
Gotcha.
Needs that acknowledgement right at the end of the social media policy itself. That's why they put it there in red line function, so you could, you can remove it for the part that's inserted into your handbook, because they acknowledge the handbook as a whole, versus the acknowledgement of just the social media policy for literally everyone else, who's not a paid employee.
Okay, so I'm replacing the entire social media section that's in this employee handbook now with.
The social media policy, we, once council approves.
Once council approves.
Anybody else have anything on the, um, employee handbook changes?
Um, I didn't have any comments on the changes. Um, something just jumped out at me, um, under vacation eligibility was that village employees may not use vacation days until they have completed one full year of employment.
That's always been that way.
More than once.
Good point. Um, well, there is a difference between management and, and hourly. Hourly accrues every pay period where management gets a lump sum right at the beginning.
If you sign a one-year contract and say you can't take vacation for a first year, I mean, it's kind of, you may never take it.
So I would.
Do, do we, do we need a note in there saying that contract employees are exempt from this? That would clarify.
More concerned that you clarify what it does apply to than what it doesn't apply to, because then when you start to get into adding exclusions, that becomes a very long list of what it doesn't apply to. It's usually better to specify what it does apply to.
So we could just say for all hourly employees not under a CBA? Would that suffice?
It's acceptable to me, I don't know about everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, I do think it, I mean, it jumped out at me as something, well, wait, this doesn't sound consistent. Um, and then also, why is that? That's like, that would be a huge burden for me. I know hiring people, people would not take a job if they knew they couldn't take a, any personal days.
Like not a sick day. Yeah, they can take sick time, they have personal, they have comp, they just can't take vacation.
I just don't understand the difference between a personal day, sick day and vacation.
So a lot of employers clo- give you different categories. Some, a lot of them are doing just full PTO now where they don't make a distinction, but several still do make a distinction.
What's a, what's the difference between a personal day and a vacation day?
A personal day can be taken, um, at any time, um, um, with adequate notice. I mean, you could call that morning and say, I'm taking a personal day. Where vacation requires you to take it in four hour increments at least. Um, and it has to be approved by your department. Cause a vacation usually is more than one day. Um, usually it's for.
If you work here, you cannot take the day off to take your kid to Cedar Point.
Personal day.
Personal day.
Without prior plan, planning is usually how it works. And they, they normally, I mean, for me, they've always accrued differently too. Like vacation days are based on your annual hired date and personal is on a, a calendar basis. So you get so many personal days per calendar year.
Sick day.
That's like a call in sick, you get.
So you get.
Do you require doctors now?
Only if it's, um, more than three days.
But that doesn't count against, you don't have sick leave. For now, we have sick leave.
Yes, we have, we have vacation, sick, personal and comp.
Comp is in lieu of.
In lieu of overtime.
No, we have, I mean, you have annual leave is what we call it, and then sick leave. I'm just not understanding why there's a third category of.
Does your sick leave accumulate, accumulate overtime? Okay, see, ours, ours doesn't.
So, so.
You get so many sick days a year, if you don't use them, you lose them. Mm-hmm, that's, yeah. Typically how we always form to.
Um, is a compensation for the holidays that we do not get. And that is front loaded again as of July 1st. So again, it's all front loading where everything else, where vacation and sick is accrued every pay period.
Okay, so you get four of those every year? Okay, so a new employee has four days they can take.
Correct.
Okay. But it's personal days.
I, yeah, all of the banks are.
That's, just that's a diff- a more difficult layer of tracking one more pot of time.
I don't know if we could get our unions to agree to PTO.
So this is, so, so that's union driven?
Wouldn't say it's.
Well, it's similar, it's similar.
It's near industry standard. This is what, I'm telling you, it is, though Mindy, every place I ever worked always did that, it's what we do.
Three different types, three different leaves.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Even simple software like QuickBooks is designed to track it in those basic categories as, as the outset. I mean, that's, that's pretty standard.
I've never worked anywhere where it was three different types of weed.
Where you really get fun into the negotiating part of whether or not it should be that is if they accumulate and they carry over. Cause a lot of corporate, they don't carry over. over. They don't renew. You use it or you lose it like whoopsie. I've never had it where it did carry over. I've seen plenty where it does. Typically doesn't.
The other thing is, is that even per our policy here, the sick time accrues on an eight or 10-hour basis, which means if you work significant overtime, you are earning more sick days than.
No, no, that's, that is whether you work an eight-hour shift or a 10-hour shift.
Okay, so.
Or a 12-hour shift.
Okay, so it's based on per shift then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else on the employee handbook?
Can we, before we move on, just for clarification, it, it's kind of going back to the last one just because, so, so we know, um, hopefully stay within the timeline. At the last meeting, when we did table this, we did go over, is there any problems with tabling this? Are we okay to table it? And we essentially have three meetings to pass it, right? We have to pass the handbook within three meetings. So the hope was we would have social media policy back from Bodman Firm, get it on open meeting, uh, next meeting, vote on it. And if we do vote and pass the, the social media policy, we could then vote and pass the, the handbook. So just for clarification, I just want to go back on, 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 on social media. Is there any other concerns other than that? Just so that we would know and we'd have time to fix them and stay on schedule. Um, nobody has any other concerns about any of the other structure or requirements, any other concerns. It, it's just that one significant issue. And if we do get, um, proper feedback, um, from, from Bodman that's satisfactory, we would be comfortable then, I'm not asking for a vote, that we'd be comfortable to vote on it at the next meeting so we stay in the timeline? Yes. And then the only other, so let's look at the other side of that coin. What if what we got back wasn't satisfactory? I believe what we agreed we would do then is basically do everything twice, which would mean pass the handbook because we have no choice with the existing social media policy, not our new one, and then have to still fix social media policy, do the whole thing all over again because you have to redo the handbook, reissue, rehab everybody do it to, to, to be compliant.
Right.
So just so I want everybody to be on the same page.
Does that mean the deadline or is it the?
Well, that would be our third one, wouldn't it?
Yes, that would be.
That's, that's, that's why we, we stayed on this if we.
I was counting this as the first, not the last one.
No, last one was the first one. Yeah. So this is, this is number two. Number three, you have the ability to pass. So we either pass with a new social media policy or without a new one, which means we do the handbook all over again anyway, when we do have a social media policy that we find agreeable. So just, just wanted that clarification for logistics.
Moving on to council manager comment. Chief, do you have anything to bring counsel?
No, I do not.
Ms. Kiesler?
Uh, yes, we did have, um, the bid opening for the wastewater treatment plant operation maintenance and management services. Um, we did receive three bids, um, and those will be discussed at the next meeting.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Glasser?
I was gonna, uh, let Dale know, but someone told me that the, uh, park benches in Burley Park are actually backwards. They're not actually facing the monument, they're behind the monument. So they asked if we could take a look at that. So.
Any other customer questions?
That's it.
Customer problem?
No, other than, well, I guess good work on the handbook and social media policy. I know it's a nightmare, but secretary on work and debate, right?
One more discussion.
Yeah.
Good discussion, but a lot of. Customer number seven.
Um, just one quick update for council. Homecoming bylaws committee met, did our final revisions to those bylaws. Um, I could get feedback from, from Ms. Kiesler as to our, our one i- issue. We'll do that later, I don't want to get back here and get cleared by everybody else. Uh, but, uh, now that we have our final draft, we'll be, we'll be submitting it to, to administration so that they can get on our agenda and hopefully with the next meeting, it's, it's starting to become a consensus that we go through it ourselves. So it should be an open discussion for next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you for your time and effort, I'm gonna appreciate it. President Probst, Stuffer?
Um, just a quick park board update slash reminder, um, there will be activities for a park on Saturday. The clients are hosting their annual Easter egg hunt. On Saturday. And, uh, following Saturday on April 26th, um, is the birthday cleanup that DPA is organizing. Um, there will also be activities at the park. We'll be doing some planting as well as, so.
Um, I just have one thing. If we have, uh, the leaseholder here that's coming, guys, we also have like an overview of what we currently spend, or leaseholder here, like our budget and services.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Just wanted to apples to apples.
Absolutely.
Great, great point.
Yeah, that's all.
Customer number one.
Um, the only thing I have is, uh, I won't be able to do the next two rounds of the year's, if I have time.
Moving on to a closed session. Do we have a motion to go to closed session to discuss the producer?
Uh, I'll make the motion to the manager to closed session and report us to session 80, if we should be able to repeat that, to consider the purchase of real property.
Motion back council, uh, President Probst and Stuffer are supported by councilor Paul, who will be closed session for the purchase of real property, to the discussion on purchase of real property. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Howell?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Stuffer?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Glasser?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.